I'd like to call the meeting of the February 8th, Rutland Board of School Commissioners Meeting to Order. If you would like to stand and recite the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
For which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary please note that all members are in attendance, including the those, the student representatives? I'd like to go for approval of the agenda.
Still moved. I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the agenda, signify by saying aye or raise your hand? Okay, opposed? Okay, so the agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is the regular agenda consent items, minutes of the previous meetings, the personnel memorandum, policies for the second reading. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Kevin? Kathy, second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Allison?
So the, it says policies for second reading and it lists them all as first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, yes. Rob?
Yeah, I apologize for that. I checked that with our team today. Those are actually the second reading policies that we had first reading last time, as they were copied and pasted into this agenda. We did not update them to note that they were second reading policies. So that is our error in how they were printed. Those are all the same second reading.
So we will make a change in the agenda then to put them as second readings? Okay, any other changes or discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so carries. I'm going right into public input. I believe we have one individual who requested to speak tonight. That was Eric Kiefer, and if you would bring him in for him to speak.
Eric Solso, so hang on, I'm looking to see if he is in as an attendee. Standby.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see him right now.
He's having trouble logging in. I think he may have just gotten it. If you could just give him another minute or 30 seconds even.
Sure, that's no problem, Kathy.
Thank you.
Yeah. You would think we have all this down pat by now, but we're still.
Yeah.
I was beginning to wonder if I might be related to this Eric Kiefer guy. Never heard of him.
You know, and I don't know why I, I don't know, maybe because I was thinking of you, Kevin, because of the first and second readings.
All right, here comes, I'm gonna promote Mr. Solso to panelist. Hold on a sec, give him a second. Come on now. Nope. So Eric, are you there? Yes, since unmute. I can see that he's been promoted. We're just, now he's unmuted. Eric, are you there?
Okay, good. Thank you for being patient. It took me a little bit.
Okay, Eric, good evening. If you would state your name, where you live, and then address the board, please.
Yeah, so my name is Eric Solso and I'm a Rutland resident. And good evening. Thank you, School Board Commissioners, for your sacrifices you make in your lives to serve our schools. I have come to ask just two things tonight, be brief. I know discussions have gotten heated over the mascot change and we all heard the derogatory profanity that Commissioner Brittany Kavak has made to Commissioner Knott at the December meeting. As of yet, there has not been an apology to Commissioner Knott. And I believe we are all supposed to model respectful behavior and conduct, and when we don't, there is a need to make that right. This is nothing more than what our teachers and parents would expect from our children. Secondly, the board previously expressed a need to ascertain if the first mascot vote change was done properly. The cost was expensive and yet it was important to you. I am not a parliamentarian and it has been previously stated that no one on the board is either. And at the last public meeting, the mascot vote appeared to have been done improperly or not by following the Roberts Rules of Order that the school board has run its meetings by. I'm asking that the board be consistent in its standards and have the meeting reviewed as you did before and make the analysis public. If the same firm conducted the analysis, the cost would be substantially less than it was before and it would only require them to look at one meeting's conduct, not a year's worth as before. So just to recap, an apology should be made by Commissioner Kavakus to Commissioner Knott. And I urge that the board retain the legal experts to review the last meeting. I'm complete.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other public comment? Okay, I don't believe anybody else signed up. So we're going right to our students' representative report.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Perfect. RIS has focused on kindness and equity this month. Mr. Brewer, our technology teacher, and Mrs. Richards and her third and fourth grade class worked to build an Olympic Ozoba arena. It is impressively on display in our main lobby. Students coded the Ozobots to compete. This week, all of RIS is skating at the Spartan Arena as one of our school-wide celebrations. What fun our students had today on the ice. Two more groups will skate later this week, giving everyone an opportunity to try something new. We are grateful to have partnered with members of the RHS hockey team and appreciate their helping hands. Check out our Facebook pictures and posts later this week. Northwest participated in a light-up Rutland social tinkering door decorating contest and won for the best decorated organization, with doors decorated throughout the school to spread kindness and a sense of belonging and joy. Northwest students enjoyed a virtual PBIS celebration last week with singer-songwriter Jared Campbell, who brought children a message of friendship and kindness. Northwest Cliff of the Year presenter this month was poet Ted Shy. Ted Shy finished up a writer's workshop with second graders just today, helping children become poets literally overnight. Northwest is gearing up for our winter carnival at Giorgetti Park. Students looking forward to sledding, snowshoeing, and everything else that Brian Kuplee, PE teacher, plans. Northeast School students have been focusing on collaboration and kindness this month. Many collaborative projects have been happening and are on display in the building. Students and teachers are preparing for our 100th Day of School celebrations. Family projects such as creating works using 100 items and 100 Acts of Kindness contests are in the works. On February 16th, Northeast will be hosting a Cliff presentation and book giveaway with Caldecott and Newberry Award-winning author illustrator Jason Chin. And finally, Northeast will be having a winter carnival at Northeast School on February 17th with sledding, skating, fort building, and hot cocoa. Thanks, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Isabella. Now we will go. Do we have our other rep? I'm sorry, I got two screens going.
Yep, she's there, Lauren, early, Lauren's there.
Okay, I'm sorry, Lauren's there. Okay.
A group of Rutland Middle School students will begin working with Generation Global, which facilitates conversations with youth from around the world. On Wednesday, this group will discuss fake news and social media with 13, 14-year-olds from Indonesia, India, and Guam, and many other countries. Hickory House Council will be facilitating the first-ever Rutland Middle School music video. They will film, edit, and compose a music video to the edited version of Dynamite. You will be sure to share it once it has been completed. Bridges is continuing to work hard to serve meals through Meals on Wheels two days a week. They are looking for other volunteer opportunities in our community. We are in our fourth week of lifelong sports, watching students grow and gain experience and confidence at Pyco Mountain, uplifting weights at the gymnasium, bowling, golfing at Stonehenge, and rock climbing has been so rewarding. Teachers are continuing to work to put together our upcoming Project-Based Learning Unit, Food for Thought, which begins on March 7th. The high school guidance office is hosting building tours in the next two weeks for prospective eighth-grade families. We hosted the eighth-grade information night last month and we are following up that effort to offer individualized tours to families. Each tour will be led by one or two members of the faculty as well as upper-class student representatives. RHS sponsored a statewide virtual speech tournament. We had three alumni, Austin Robertson, Trevor McKay, and Ethan Schmidt, along with four faculty members act as judges. We were also able to get a former NBC Discovery Channel producer and an executive at HarperCollins to also judge. All of the judges were impressed with the talent of our students. In pros, 11th grade Emma Wharton got first place in a crowded field. In impromptu, 12th grade Abid Alawi, a defending state champion, got first place. And in poetry, 9th grade Castle V. Wells got second place. All of these three categories had the most participants. Rutland High School students participated in the Vermont Youth Project Survey this week. The survey is important for youth because it helps communities better understand how young people feel about their community, peers, and the school. Vermont After School collects local data to ensure we are reflecting youth's perspectives on their own communities. This real-time data can be a valuable tool for the community to help create an environment where all youth can be active, connected, engaged, and heard. ASC has been taking advantage of our favorable weather by skiing, snowshoeing, sledding, and ice skating in our own community. Yesterday, we had our first skate lesson with instructors from Arsene Skate Shop and a class from RIS. It was a huge success. We are excited to introduce another healthy activity to our school community. Skateboarding provides kids and adults affordable access to action sports, increases confidence, and builds resilience in them. Our High Tunnel project has been actively researching, planning, and has started perennial seeds indoors. These plants will beautify our grounds and improve the health of our land. Students are really embracing a growth mindset on campus and creating change within our community. So much, in fact, we will no longer require a dumpster at the Allen Street campus moving forward. Thank you. That concludes my student report.
Okay, before I open it up to the board for questions and comments, Isabella had her hand up.
Yeah, I forgot I wanted to mention that I've been working with Mr. Ben Hines with the Vermont Digger to write a piece about the mascot. It'll be none of my own opinion. It will be all student voices. So I'm interviewing students around Rutland High School from both sides. And I just wanted you guys to look out for that, maybe Sunday or Monday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Isabella. Comments or questions for our student reps? Okay, seeing none. And Rob, you'll have to help me.
Early, Stephanie has her hand up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Stephanie.
That's okay. I have a question for Isabella and Lauren. I'm just curious, as the student reps, what do you guys do in regards to getting the reports that you read at these monthly meetings? Do you go visit the schools? Do you just speak to the principals? Just if you could give me a little insight on what you guys do in your role as student reps. Thanks.
Lauren, I'll speak if you don't have anything. So I think it might just be because of COVID, but we email and discuss with the principals of each school right now, just talking about different activities they do. We haven't been able to go in person, but I'm sure that'll eventually be able to happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we look to be bringing on Mike Norman for the Activities and Athletic Report. There's Mr. Norman.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully, I don't know if you're gonna have slides in front of you or I know this was probably sent to you through downtown's office, but the first page of the report is in regards to activities and athletics. But before I get started, just something that wasn't mentioned, that two of our student athletes, Olivia Calvin and Brady Geisler, were selected from all of the state of Vermont as our scholar-athletes. And there were five or six boys and five or six girls, and then Brady was the overall state winner. And he will be pushed on to the Section 1 competition. And they get a nice cash prize in it. And again, I think it speaks to what RHS and the public school has to offer everybody out there. So I just wanted to add that. But getting to the report.
Coach, can I just stop? Mr. Bliss, can you share this report with us on the screen so our public can see it?
Yep, standby. I'll have it. I'll have it in a moment, I think. I had to go dig it up. Standby.
All right, I apologize, Mike.
It's okay.
Okay, I'm hoping you can see that and I'm hoping I'll be able to move it when it's time. There you go.
If you could just move it to the next page, Rob, please. So that slide in front of you is a look at what goes on here at the high school, what went on here last year, 2020 and 2021. And the top is about the activities and basically 61 students participated in one activity and then it goes all the way down to one student participated in seven. And then beneath that is, you know, how many kids participated in one sport, two sports, and then three sports? And then it gives you an overall number there. And the participation was, you know, 357 out of 804, for, you know, 44% roughly. But you have to understand that we did not have indoor track. And we have a wrestling club and there was no indoor track and no wrestling. That was off to last year in the state of Vermont. So, you know, again, I think the numbers are down a little bit just due to the coming back for the pandemic. And I think we're making some serious headway this year. Next slide, please. That goes to show the Athletic and Activities Council members there. What we did probably four years ago or so, we took the Athletic Council and the Activities Council and merged them to have one. They used to operate separately. We go together basically once every four, five, six weeks. We have been doing them in person and I think the strength of this is, is that you get people from both sides of the house get to sit down and talk to one another about what their opinions are on certain matters and, you know, finances and things of that nature. And we have some, you know, myself, some advisors here from school, the middle school, some coaches, some school board members, booster clubs, student reps, and everybody, you know, has a say in what goes on. And the whole idea is to bring anything to you folks that needs to be talked about at a much higher level there. And it's been a real positive thing. And a lot of, a lot of people have, you know, given up a lot of time for that. Next slide, please. Talks again about academic achievement, tri-scholar athlete. I mean, to me, that's, you know, as a student athlete, that means that you're playing three sports, fall, winter, and spring, and you're making the honor roll every single marking period that you're here. Last year, we had six graduating seniors qualified for tri-scholar athlete as seniors, but five of them were four-year tri-scholar athletes, meaning that they were on the honor roll and played three sports their entire high school career. And again, we put a nice plaque up in the school and, you know, the student athletes get one upon graduation as well. Also underneath that, there were 41 underclassmen that were doing that. And again, I think that's something that we, you know, will try to improve upon. But again, I think it's a testament to what's going on here, you know, both as students and as athletes, rather, that, you know, having two state winners, a boy and a girl, and then having the overall state winner speaks to the hard work that the kids have been putting in. And beneath that is the Academic Achievement Award, the sort of activity hours for our clubs. There were three graduating seniors, five underclassmen, and of the three graduating seniors, there was one student that did it all four years. And again, in order to be a AAA winner, that means you have to do 120 hours of community service. And again, it's amazing how much these kids do. And you get, if you play sports, you get 40 hours of community service because you participated in one sport. And then every else, you know, from Key Club to GMTI and all the other different clubs and activities that we offer. Please ask me any questions if you have any. Can you move to the next slide, please? I mean, this is the numbers of kids that are participating in sports that they did last year. I will tell you that nationally, the number of students that are participating in any extracurricular, co-curricular sport or activity is down. And, you know, I was in Indianapolis two weeks ago. And what's, what's going on out there is all across the country. I think our numbers were down a little bit, but I think overall we're in a pretty good spot. Again, I think this year the numbers will rebound some there. It talks about how many teams that we have at the high school, how many, you know, middle school, how many coaches that we have. You know, the real struggle right now, to be honest with you, is third-level sports at the high school level. You know, I mean, when I first came here and I first started this job, it was varsity, JV, and freshman. Now it's varsity, JV, and JVB. JVB is a name and we used to call it red and white, but we call it JVB now throughout the state of Vermont, where you can use ninth graders and 10th graders on a third-level team. The problem right now is we have enough kids for a third-level team, but many other schools, including many of the bigger schools than us, you know, for instance, CBU. Another school is Essex. Like Essex did not have a third-level girls' basketball team. You know, I mean, CBU, who's a power in soccer, they did not carry a third-level soccer team. But we continue to offer that and how we're augmenting that or supplementing that is that we're jumping in, like tonight, our JVB girls' basketball team is, you know, playing over in West Rutland because West Rutland's varsity team, I do not know who they're playing, but the team that they're playing does not have a second team. So our JVB team has fallen into that. Beneath that, you know, it just goes all the way down through basketball through the spring. And if you look at last year's sports from afar, you know, it's hard to believe it's, time has passed so quickly. Fall was kind of normal to a degree. I mean, I coached football. It was not normal. It was much different. We probably had 10 or 15 kids didn't play. I think in the winter, our season was delayed. We didn't start winter sports basically until the middle of January. We did have state championship games and so forth. And then where things started to come back to normal, or the new normal, was last spring. And that's where the numbers still were down a little bit, but I think they were relatively consistent with, you know, years past. But as you can see, we had quite a few kids that participated. And, you know, I think it's one of the strengths of the high school for kids that are school choice and whatnot. We offer a lot of sports teams for kids to participate in. And having a third-level basketball team, or a football team, or baseball team, or softball team is definitely a bonus. Next slide, please. And that's just a look at the hard numbers of students, I mean, from each grade that participated. And again, I am of the opinion that next year the numbers will, will move up some. There's still some work to do. And again, like I said, I coached football this fall. I had to do more selling to come back out and play football and participate than I ever have. But I think our coaching staff is committed to doing that and trying to get as many kids involved with all of this stuff here, just as another vehicle to get them through school, to graduate and go out and do great things after they get done. Next slide, please. From there, we're talking about clubs and activities. And this right here is, you know, the high school. And again, some of those clubs did not run. Some of the clubs, the numbers, you know, I mean, they're down. But again, I think a lot of it, just a lot of people just didn't know what to do, quite frankly. But I think as time went on, people felt more comfortable with the new normal. And then, you know, like I said, I wish I had the numbers for this year. I think things are in a much, much better place. But I will tell you that I believe that both the clubs and the sports and the athletics, you know, is a draw card to get kids to get back in the swing of things here at school. And I think it's gonna take a couple of years. Next slide, please. And then, you know, it's the same thing for the middle school. And again, sometimes we have clubs that run and then other years they don't run. There is a process. If, for those of you that are new school board members, there is a process. If somebody wants to start a club, they come to me, they make a pitch to me, they put it on paper, they have to have an advisor. And we typically tell them it's a two, maybe three-year process to justify the, you know, the cost of having a supervisor or an advisory position. And then it's my job, you know, going to the Athletic Activities Council and then putting it pen to paper and then putting it being a part of the budget. And it goes down to the intermediate school. And you can just take a look at that. Like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to, you know, just ask. Last slide, please. And again, this talks about the athletic training services here that are provided to our kids. And that's not just kids that play sports or coaches. You know, we have kids today, Tyler White, who was our athletic trainer. He was working with a couple of kids that they're injured and they have come to see him and he's working them with rehab. We have staff members, faculty members. We have kids from the middle school. They have access to the service as well. Excuse me. And it's a great thing. I think sometimes, myself included, we might take this for granted, but, you know, I have a younger brother that has three boys that are playing high school sports right now and they don't have this in place. I mean, having the ability to get in touch with, you know, VOC, you know, iSport, I mean, any of the rehab facilities around here in town. And then having Tyler here and I was actually talking to a mother of a kid that plays football that's gonna have surgery. And I said, just having the ability to come in after school every day to get your rehab is a big plus, not having to take them, you know, I mean, off-site or, you know, it might not even be available. But, you know, this is something that not a lot of high schools have. They're out states that it is mandated, mandated. But we have an athletic trainer and there's training students here, typically Monday through Friday after school. And as you can see from the slide that we're showing previously, it tells you what sports that they go there. Couple, just like everything else that's going on in the world right now, there's not enough athletic trainers to be had. So we had a cheerleading competition and we had a girls' hockey game. And Tyler White is the trainer and he thought it was more important for him to be at the girls' the cheerleading competition rather than the girls' hockey game. So in that situation, you know, it's one of those, if somebody were got hurt or really injured, we'd have to call 911 and call Rutland Regional. I mean, in an ideal world, we would have a trainer for every single sport and activity, but that's just two reasons. Number one is just the people power and then the other piece being the finance. So that's a lot of information in a very short period of time. If you have any questions, feel free to shoot away because when I get done here, I gotta go down to tonight's senior night for the girls' basketball team. So how can I help you?
Thank you very much, Coach Norman. People, comments, questions?
I noticed Brittany has her hand up.
Okay. Yeah, Coach, just one question. This year from last year, I know that there was no track and no wrestling. Have we been able to kind of bring back those programs and are we looking at this? Maybe the kids that didn't have a chance last year, you know, those juniors and seniors, have they been able to pick back up?
Well, wrestling is a sport, Brittany, that was a sport here that was, you know, we had a coach, we had a program, and then the numbers dwindled down. And then due to budget constraints and budgets not passing, some decisions, hard decisions were made and they would just eliminated wrestling. So now we have a wrestling club. And there's only one individual this year that he actually goes over to Fairhaven every day and wrestles with those, with that team. And it's Scott Shattuck over there. He's a great guy and, you know, I mean, student athlete that's doing, he might have a chance to win a state championship. That'll happen in the next couple of weeks. As far as track goes, our numbers, I think we're around 15 indoor track and field members for the winter. But schools like St. Johnsbury would bring two buses. They'd bring 60 or 70 kids to an indoor track event. This year, they were only bringing about 30. So 15 and 30, you know, if you're in the know, it'll be, you know, it's you know, if 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 you're in the know, it'll be, you know, it's not just, and again, I'm not kind of you know, deflect the blame or anything like that. It's going to take a little bit of time to get kids re-engaged and involved. And like I said, our coaches have done a nice job of getting out into the community and reaching out. And if anybody has any ideas to help us with that, feel free to stop in or give me a call or shoot me an email. Um, if if you have a better way of doing it, um, I'm all ears.
No, that's great. It's just nice for the kids. So it's nice to see that it's there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Bliss, do you see anybody that I don't see?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we're looking at school improvement plan and Mr. Bliss, this is your Valleywig.
That's me. Okay, so I shared my screen and you should be able to see the first slide. I want to apologize to the board. I I sent you some slides by email earlier today and just earlier this evening, I switched two of them. I think slide three and four I switched. So you'll be able to follow. Um, but I appreciate the board and the community for giving us a chance to talk about what's going on in the school district. And also about what our improvement plans are. Um, so as I started with last year, you can't start this year without talking about the efforts of the school community as a whole. And also of all our administrators, faculty and staff that have made sure that we have been able to keep our schools as open and healthy and serving our community as we possibly can. Coming out of the summer, we hoped we would be in a more COVID-free environment. We weren't. Everybody rallied. We made sure we were open and serving the community. And then coming out of December break, again, we were hoping for a little bit of a break there. And then we had the Omicron wave and a bit more uptick in cases. And so, and it and it heightened case of awareness. Once again, I have to say that the administrators, faculty, staff and and everybody who works in our community to keep our schools open and running did an outstanding job just to make sure that we were still serving the community as well as we possibly could. So thank you to all those people. Um. Just an update from the Agency of Education on the status of continuous improvement planning and how it works. As of last Wednesday, February 2nd, uh, the Agency of Education didn't really have a method by which schools across and districts across the state would be submitting their continuous improvement plans. They're hoping to make it so that in some way it melds and combines with our ARPESR3 plan, which you saw, uh, at a previous meeting. Um, so that it it doesn't make us do two or three or four different plans. As always, one of the things that we do as a district and the state asks us to do as well is to each year, take a look at what we're planning to do and assess what our process is and our progress is. So that'll be going on this spring as we look forward to how we spend grant money in the coming school year. Um, as a school district, we have three different big picture goals. One is about our K to 12 curriculum and having that re-articulated uh, within the next three years. One relates to the middle school establishing, uh, teacher advisory as well as solid and smooth transitions from grade six through nine. And one is working as a district to become a trauma intelligent district evermore. Uh, on the first goal, uh, as you might know, we do have a core curriculum team that's working. Uh, starting this past late August, each school took a look at the math ELA and in the upper level levels course content standards and re-articulated what are the priority standards in every section of the Common Core curriculum and the Vermont standards. And we articulated those. Then the groups started working on the supporting standards. And the next step they'll be working on is so how do you measure the proficiency in each one of those? This is a long task. It's being overseen by our coaches, Lorraine Bargman, um, Dana Johnson and Susan Hackett and Abby Bradowski, uh, as well as teacher leaders within each school. Um, it's a slow progress, uh, project, but the work is ongoing and the people see the value of re-upping our understanding of what our focus standards for the students are. And that's going smoothly. Sometime, uh, probably toward the end of the year, beginning of next year, I look forward to perhaps giving you a full update on the progress of that. Um, the second goal is the middle school advisory. And as I reported last year, the middle school advisories are in place and the teams in the middle school work together to make sure that they have a common approach to what they're accomplishing in those advisories. The focus this year and last has been guided by consulting from the Tarrant Institute. Um, and so we're working together to make sure we continue to grow the relationships between students and adults at Roland Middle School. The transition piece, um, came into real play this past uh, spring and summer when we had because of the pandemic and quarantining and everything, quite a few students who needed some extra support in preparing for um, arriving at Roland High School. And so the middle school and the high school worked together to create some new programming over the summer and into this year to make sure the students are prepared for the expectations there. It's an ongoing project and and process for us. And then, uh, our trauma intelligent, uh, school system. The need has been well established, uh, through public healthcare data. The number of students that are opiate exposed at birth back in 2013, if you do the math, those kids are all eight years old now. The number of students who come to us each year whose parents show that they have some form of adverse childhood experiences runs around 70% of the kids. So we have students that that come to us with need. And I'll add to that, um, that the pandemic has created some disconnect for many people. And in the Vermont Youth Project survey that we give to grades seven through 12, those students reported, more than half of them, that the effect of COVID adversely affected their sense of mental well-being and made them feel a little bit more lonely and isolated. I will add that, uh, in addition to what we what we've been working on, that this year in particular at Roland High School, thanks to Greg Schillinger's leadership and the team there of teacher leaders and administrators, that they're working on building what we're calling a school within a school. Uh, we have, um, students who are looking for more engagement in their school day. And so we're trying to create a way that we can individualize attention to them and create a school day at a time and place that works best for them and for everybody else in the school. So you may hear more about the school within a school. Um, finally, before I move on to our K to six people, or actually I'll ask for any questions you may have. Um, this, uh, handout, I won't click the link tonight, but I will tell you on the board and the people in the public that if you click on, if you go to the city clerk's webpage and you click on it and you scroll down toward the bottom, it has wonderful information about how to vote. Uh, town meeting day is March 1st and, you know, civic engagement is one of the purposes of education. And so we encourage all of our Rutland City, you know, citizens who are 18 years or older to make sure they understand how to register, how easy it is to register to vote, and then what they're voting on. And this webpage has great information about where you vote. And in each ward, the ballot is slightly different. So you can get a look at what the ballot language in your particular ward is so that you know what you need to do. There's also opportunities to request an absentee ballot. And if you're a registered voter, you can still go in early and vote early at the clerk's office. So I always share that information because, as I say, as educators, we really, we really want to see, uh, a large civic engagement. And so with that, that's a fast, big overview. Um, any question and answer about that big overview? And then I will roll it back to our K to K to six leaders.
Any questions, comments? See anything, Rob?
I am not yet. I'm trying to make sure I have the next bunch of slides ready to go, which I will get going.
Okay, I guess we're headed to the next level.
That's right. And I will introduce, I know we have on the call, we have, uh, Principal Lauren Pep, Principal Suzanne Engels, and Assistant Principal Jessica Henderson. And so what I will do is I will share the slides and I will turn it over to these great folks for their presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lauren Pep and I'll start the presentation. Our current second graders were in kindergarten when life as they knew it came to a screeching halt. They pivoted to remote learning for the final trimester of their kindergarten school year. And now here we are, three school years later, still in the midst of this pandemic. Although their entire schooling has been affected by the pandemic, thank goodness our resilient children continue to learn. Thanks to their incredible teachers, support staff, and the wonderful families who team with us. Next slide, please, Rob. Next slide, please. Thank you. Our teachers and staff are resilient and strong too, albeit exhausted and concerned. They show up every day out of love for their students and commitment to this work. Despite the many additional responsibilities they've had due to the pandemic, several teachers committed to professional development that provides them with inspiration, new ideas, techniques, and strategies to support student learning. As I walk through the classrooms, I see these teaching skills and others we've honed over the years being utilized. I love hearing what I call the buzz of learning in our classrooms. Next slide, please. What is the buzz of learning? For me, it's when I step into a classroom and I see this beautiful sight. Children working throughout the classroom and I hear soft murmurings as children sound out words and read softly to themselves or to others. Many are working independently, silent reading in a cozy corner, working on writing or reinforcing skills on their Chromebooks. Meanwhile, small groups of children rotate in to receive personalized instruction from their teacher. This framework allows the teacher to conduct small group targeted instruction. At the same time, it promotes student independence, choice, and high levels of engagement, all of which help to instill confidence, a sense of purpose, and a love of literacy. Next slide, please. Here's another example from a student who felt pride and that sense of purpose in his work. When I walked into one of our first grade classrooms, a student exclaimed, "We're writers now, Mrs. Pep. Would you come back when we're doing writer's workshop, please? I want you to see what we're doing." This was an impromptu comment made by one young first grader, a rough and tumble six-year-old who is engaged, confident, eager to learn, and full of pride while viewing himself as a writer. Next slide, please. Our teachers and staff deserve much credit. These young people they teach every day who've lived on this earth for only five, six, or seven years are already becoming independent, critical thinkers who already show a love of learning that hopefully will last them a lifetime. Our teachers are hardworking professionals who love what they do. As lifelong learners themselves, they appreciate professional development opportunities and resources to sustain and enhance their practice. They appreciate acknowledgement of their dedication and commitment to their students every single day, especially throughout this relentless pandemic. Overall, our children are making gains when they are in school. However, due to multiple quarantines, for most children, the gains are not always gap closing. Our teachers report that at this time, the range of learning levels are greater in each individual classroom than ever before. Personalized instruction helps to address this, combined with other mitigation measures. Tutoring is one example. Through tutoring, we've been able to offer many of our students supplemental instruction before and after school, and this has helped. All of our educators work hard to support student learning in the most effective and efficient manner. And they do this with smiles on their faces and love in their hearts. Next slide, please.
In addition to our focus on academic growth, we also continue to focus on social emotional learning. And to do this, we use three different approaches. First, as Rob mentioned, we are a trauma-informed or a trauma-sensitive set of schools. And with that, we help students and adults cope with anxiety through an awareness of their own anxiety within their bodies or states of dysregulation. And we help students and adults cope by providing and using tools. Next slide, please. Next, we continue to use positive behavior intervention and supports. And we use this to teach new skills and expectations. And we use PBIS to celebrate positive behaviors in school when they're happening, as they're happening. And next slide. So with our PBIS, we we point out and celebrate successes, um, through individual recognition, uh, such as giving students certificates through small group events, like having a class pajama day or a PA or STAR student lunch with the principal. Or with large school-wide events such as trips to a skating rink or grade-level dance parties. Next slide, please. And then the third approach I wanted to, um, mention is the restorative approaches. And with this, students and teachers meet in circle groups and we use a structured, respectful process where, uh, in our circles, we celebrate achievements or we communicate and discuss tricky or complicated, important, uh, communications. Or we use the restorative circles to repair damaged relationships. Next slide.
With the many stressors faced by our students, including those that have resulted from the pandemic, we're very grateful for the opportunities to learn and employ these new strategies to support our students. And we're thankful for our more robust continuum of supports, which include our revamped planning rooms, known as the Starship and the POD respectively. Multi-age social emotional learning classrooms in both buildings for students who may need an alternative en- environment for portions of their day, as well as our newest support now in its second year across the street from Northwest, the Pier Point Personalized Learning Center. PPLC is a community of learners supporting students in grades K5, providing personalized programming in an in an environment that is responsive to individual needs. We focus foremost on the social emotional learning skills and weave those skills throughout the curriculum in both the indoor classroom and the outdoor classroom spaces. We work closely with families to help support and link them with community resources. At PPLC, our students are learning to reflect on their growth. And one of our students recently shared that at PPLC, I am learning more and I don't get in as much trouble as I used to at my old school. I might still get mad and frustrated, but I'm learning how to control my feelings better. I like to come to school now. With that being said, we are so fortunate to be able to offer these continuum of supports for our young learners. Next slide, please, Rob. Oh, and then next slide, please.
So at Northeast, Northwest, and PPLC, we work very hard to engage our students, our families, and the community. So some of the ways that we do this is to bring in guests and to engage with community members, such as, uh, we have had a representative from the Department of Transportation come. Um, and he visited us after we got to name one of the state plows after our school. Next slide. We also, uh, model and promote positive character traits to our students. We, uh, promoted generosity by, uh, helping our kids, um, feel valuable and feel important in the community. So we had them, um, support the Humane Society through a collection drive of food and treats for, um, pets at the Humane Society. Next slide.
And here are our students doing their iLove Rutland. For all of the support we've received from our school board, from our hardworking families who continue to team with us throughout this pandemic and our Rutland City community, on behalf of our young learners and all of us who teach them, we thank you all. Once again this year, please be on the lookout for Valentines made out to downtown Rutland businesses from our second graders as they spread more love in this community that they love so much. Thank you all, and please do let us know if you have any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of our? Okay, Kevin, I see your hand.
Uh, I just want to commend you all on the, this is amazing stuff, the the trauma-informed informed work and, uh, teaching kids how to, I mean, there's so many kids who are not prepared for school when they come at an early age. And this is the exactly the kind of stuff they need to be able to connect and to learn in time developmental. in time developmentally for it to be effective. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there other comments, questions?
Allison has your hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah, I had a question. Lauren brought up the tutoring that you're able to offer. So, you know, and a couple of things that you brought up around that, I think it's definitely not unexpected, but certainly concerning that despite the gains, our gaps are growing. I think we already had very diverse needs within our classrooms, and certainly definitely more challenging for the teachers. So maybe if you could speak a little bit more about the tutoring, you know, one of my first thoughts is before and after school, are there transportation issues? Are we able to leverage, you know, tapestry? And is there any parental involvement needed? Or someone that parents could contact if maybe the school hasn't identified, but they have concerns?
Sure, I'll be happy to speak to that, and then if any Rob or Suzanne want to chime in, feel free. We are getting, we're gearing up to offer tutoring again, starting after February break. That'll be before and after school, and it's those students who have been identified as having a need for that tutoring. Transportation, well, I know Rob Bliss is working on that. We're hoping to have transportation at 4:15 or 4:30, so a little bit after the school day. We don't have before-school transportation, so anyone who were to come in earlier in the school day would need to get transported by a family member or a caregiver. Does that answer your question, Allison?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Brittany?
Just one thing. I have had the privilege of seeing both Jessica and Lauren. Sorry, Mrs. Angles, but I haven't had a chance to get over there, but Northwest and Pier Point, and it's incredible to see what's happening in the classrooms and how you're kind of making things work with the difficulty that we've had over the last few years. And it's nice to see the smile on the kids' faces, because you can, even through their masks, you can see it in their cheekbones. So I really, I appreciate everything that you're doing to try to enhance that. And I can't, I always talk about it, but I have been thoroughly impressed with Northeast and Pier Point as I've visited them, because they are my school. So thank you guys very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for saying that, Brittany. Be a great...
Anybody else? Rob, can you see anybody?
I think you're okay for now.
Okay, so superintendents report.
We still have to do Rutland Intermediate School.
Okay, thank you. You can... Okay.
And I have here Kerry Corres here, and Justine Ruland, and Megan Martin. Yes, we do have Megan, okay.
All right, thank you.
Justine, can you share your screen for us?
I can.
Thanks. Rob, you're off the hook on this one. Justine's gonna do it.
All right, can everyone see that okay?
Good. All right, so on behalf of myself and Justine and Megan, we want to thank you for taking the time to let us speak about the wonderful things that we see happening here at the intermediate school. So our first slide, you, I know you got most of these, so that's our mission statement. Hopefully, it took a minute to read it. I'm not gonna share it with you. But this summer, we revamped our school expectations to be both inclusive and more straightforward. Focusing on and celebrating the positive behaviors we see in individuals, classrooms, grade levels, and the school as a whole has been an effective way to connect our entire school community. Who better to explain these expectations than our students?
Can't hear them.
You might have to stop share and then start your share again, and make sure you click Share Sound.
Got it.
You weren't really off the hook then.
Try it again, I'll back it up.
Brave means and do courage.
To be you means to be yourself and do what you would normally do without being judged.
To be kind means to help others in need.
Being brave means to have courage and do something that you might be afraid to do.
Be your best means that you kind of try not to get in trouble, and it means you try your best with everything that you do. So be your best kind of means like, you know, be your best.
All right. So I'm proud to inform you that RIS is not only a PBIS school, but more specifically, we've recognized this year by Secretary French as a PBIS School of Distinction for efforts throughout the pandemic. The whole intent behind this is to build a strong sense of community. We highlight character traits each month and use common language, celebrating the positives that we see, which in turn breeds more positive. And it's also very nice to see the connection to the primary schools. You know, they have their stars and their paws, and then they come here, and they have something to call their own here. We believe that if we want our expectations to become ingrained into our community, we need to explicitly teach them and make time to do so a priority. Every classroom starts their day with a community block. This time is dedicated to strengthening relationships and ensuring everyone starts their day with a positive experience. This year, we have become even more committed to using restorative practices at RIS. As much as we would like to think everything is always running smoothly, there are occasions when we need to address situations that arise. Sorry, rather than me telling you, we thought a few of our students could do a better job.
A circle can help you settle a disagreement or an argument with someone. And a circle can help two people with, say, if you have an argument with them and you don't want to talk to them, and you have someone to be there, and then so like a big argument won't happen, you can talk to them and express your feelings to them.
One time that circles helped me was when the cafeteria was crazy and I needed help fixing it. And the circle solved our problems, because we got to discuss it, and the people that were doing it stopped doing it.
In my class, we've had circles because mostly people maybe act bad or maybe act good, and they would tell, like, the people that did it wrong, they would say, like, "It's my fault. I could have done it wrong." And the people that are not refusing not to say it, we just discussed who did it and stuff. So in the morning, we normally have circles, mostly about just talking and like seeing. And we do check-ins, like, if you're green, blue, yellow, or red, mostly none of us are red. And at the end of the week, Friday, we have closing circles. And in the week, we have some circles that we call just because somebody did something bad, or yeah, that's it.
So keeping with our... Whoops, there he is again.
Sorry.
It's okay.
There we go.
Yeah, so keeping with our theme of, you know, working together and being stronger that way, we all have focused on the same goals this year. Every teacher in the building is working on at least two of the four goals that you see here. We're working towards increasing our math and reading SBACK scores, always keeping in mind that this is only one measure of how students are performing. We closely monitor our behavior data and are looking for a decrease in our Tier Three referrals. And then lastly, we had each grade level or department set a goal around engaging families. Excellent, there you go. So how do we do that? We look academically, this year, we included some SBACK interim assessments in the fall and in the spring, and just to help gauge how things, you know, are going towards the SBACK when we take that in the late spring. We have four, we added an additional round of intervention. So we have four rounds, looking really at being data-focused. We use FastBridge and F&amp;P assessments across the whole building. We create, I say we, it's mostly all the classroom teachers are creating Common Local Assessment, so it doesn't matter, you know, whose class you're in, in, say, fourth grade, you're all getting the same assessment so that they can calibrate and look at, you know, how students are doing. We are working on curriculum development. We have identified our priority standards, working now on building some proficiency scales to go with those standards. And then again, as I said, our professional learning goals are aligned with our school-wide goals. For behavior, we mentioned the community block, the PBIS, the restorative approaches. This summer, we had a team of teachers get together and put in a sensory pathway down on our bottom floor, and that has been really helpful. I should have taken a picture of that. That has been helpful for kids who, you know, need a little break, have a little extra energy, maybe need to work on a gross motor skill. They can just use that in the hallway. That's been utilized quite a bit. We, Ms. Ruland, has updated our minor and behavior tracking forms, identified what behaviors are dealt with by administration or a restorative room, and which ones are handled in the classroom. We, she also does a fantastic job with our data review. We, again, this year are doing surveys for our three most important stakeholders, our students, our staff, and our families. One families could be looking out for, because one's coming out soon. This year, we also partnered with Barge, and they are coming to each sixth-grade class and doing sessions in the morning during their community block for emotional intelligences. And we also have just partnered with the Rutland Regional Medical Center, and they are coming, working with fifth and sixth grade on anti-vaping. We, you know, we haven't had DARE here in a few years, so it's definitely a void that we're seeing. So we're fortunate, we've been able to connect with these two organizations. We do also partner with VOP, and as you heard in the student report, we now are working closely with Allen Street with some of our kiddos. So they're getting to benefit on all that they have to offer. Next slide, there you go. So here, you know, pretty much talked about everything, except we have started Everybody Wins Again, which is a reading mentorship that has started back up, which is a good sign. Kids, you know, anytime they can connect with another adult, I think that's a great thing. Doing that through literature is, makes it all the better. And our technology integration, I wanted to chat about just real quick. We have Adam Brua is our tech teacher here, and he has just been doing an absolutely fabulous job. Kids are making commercials, they are doing just all kinds of stuff, biographies, whatever, with green screens. And most recently, and Brittany, I heard you went to Northwest, you're more than welcome, any of you here, anytime. But we have the Ozobot Olympics happening. Our kiddos have, Ms. Richards' class, as Isabella shared, they have done some coding, and it's set up here in the main hallway, and it's really quite impressive. So come take a peek. I know the Herald is coming to do a story on it. And Mrs. Agner highlighted it in the technology news, so very nice to get some good press, so. And then the last slide, you can see, you know, this is all of us. RIS staff right here, you can see we've all come together. On one of the shirts in the front, you can see it says Teacher Strong. I do believe that we are stronger when we work together to achieve whatever the goal is that we set. I also believe that RIS is the place to be, and the pun is intended there, so. That's it. Any questions?
Is there, is there any questions, comments? Mr. Bliss, do you see anything that I'm missing? Oh, Stephanie, I'm sorry.
There you go.
I think it's been, just listening to you guys, all four of you who have spoken in the last 15 minutes, I think it's definitely some pretty awesome things that you guys are doing in the school, and I love listening to the kids. So maybe like even in the student reports, if we could get some of the kids to say some of those things, that would be, it just, it's just kind of brings it a little bit different, because we're hearing from the students. It's always good listening to the little ones talk. Miss those days.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you all. Very, very informative, a lot of good work going on. And thank you for your staff and your leadership for all the hard work. Thank you. Now, I believe, Mr. Bliss, we have Mr. Olson up.
That's me. That was beautiful. These are tough acts, tough acts to follow, so I might bore you a tiny bit, but I want to give you a little bit of a COVID update, as we have every month, and just keep people up to date about what's happening statewide and what's happening in the schools. So I think everybody's aware that we're starting to see case counts going down after that peak, I think, that hit probably the second week in January. And so we're informed by the Agency of Education through the Department of Health that they are expecting declining case counts from now on through the end of March. And hopefully, that's the truth, and that will continue. But because of that, the Agency of Education, Department of Health, have shifted their guidance on COVID prevention and mitigation strategies for schools. And I just wanted to explain a little bit about the logic of that. The logic is, you know, they're expecting declining case counts, and they're seeing that right now. And they also know that vaccination rates are quite high in Vermont, in fact, the highest in the country for school-age kids. So those two factors, combined with the fact that schools have been able to prove that they can operate safely with students in person, have shifted their guidances to what we've been using previously to this, through the Delta variant and the beginning of the Omicron variant. The guidance now is we're moving away from contact tracing, away from quarantines, and away from testing in schools. We'd done that at the beginning of January, now we're shifting away from it. So over the last month, we've shifted to the test-at-home practice that the state has offered us. And that really places testing capacity in the hands of families. So the state has given us literally thousands of test kits for our families that allow families to test at home when we suspect that there's a, there might have been a case in the building, and that a student might have become a presumptive contact. We're also notifying families if we hear of cases, but we're not doing that contact tracing like we had done before. Really now, the obligation for monitoring student illness is back on families and not on the school. So decisions are being made at the family level rather than the school level. But we still are asking that if you're demonstrating COVID-19 symptoms, either staff or students, that you'd stay home from a school. So if you're sick, please, please stay home. So we're starting to see a little transition away from what we were doing before. Things are changing for sure, and I'd be sick more changes through the end of the month. But I do, again, want to thank, I mean, listening to all these great presentations, you can see how people are still persevering through all of this. So I'll thank our families and our staff for all the collaboration, the patience, and all the effort that people have made over the last six months since the beginning of the school year. We've had to address Delta and Omicron. And that wasn't really what we were expecting to be doing this year. We thought we'd be back to normal, and it didn't turn out that way. So the schools have been able to keep our entire community safe. So the schools have been able to keep our entire community safe, safe and healthy, healthy. And we kept the schools open. That, that was a, a big accomplishment considering all that the society has gone through. So hopefully this is a once in a lifetime event. We'll, we'll move away from this. I would, we just had her on screen, so I would like to congratulate Principal Lauren Pep. She has decided that this is the year to retire and that's a good year to pick, good year, Lauren, to say this is, this is the end. So Lauren has devoted 37 years of her life in her role in education to children. That's incredibly impressive. And she capped it off with a role as principal at Northwest School and at Pier Point, Pier Point Personalized Learning Center. She wrote a letter of resignation that I'd like to take one sentence quote from, and it was really, really touching. She said, "I will miss the beautiful children and the supportive staff at Northwest and PPLC. I have enjoyed the colleagueship, the camaraderie and the collaborative atmosphere that we create as we work together to love and nurture our children and provide them with opportunities to learn, grow and become independent critical thinkers." So I know that this entire district is going to miss Lauren and her leadership and her care that she's provided to our, our students through all her years at the Rutland School System. So we, we will miss her this year, next year. And to update the board, then Pam Reed is leading a screening committee to fill this position. That process has begun and we hope to have it complete in time for the next board meeting. I'll just say a couple of brief words about what's happening in the legislature. And I might not be as up to date as I had hoped because I saw another, another communication came in right before the board meeting started, but I didn't get to check it out. But I'll start by saying the VSA and VPA and ESBA, they've tried to communicate to the legislature this year, a common message regarding the pandemic and what's happening in schools. And what they've tried to communicate frequently over the last month is that there's a, a very high level of stress that the pandemic has placed on schools, on students and on staff. So they're requesting that the legislature consider all of this. And, you know, if they're, they're hoping that there's not going to be too many new initiatives this year. The focus really should be on helping schools recover and helping families recover from the effects of the pandemic. And that would be our, our goal as well. Related to the pandemic in, in the legislature, the legislature is considering the creation of a study committee to see how they could develop interests in the teaching profession, which is, this is coming out of what seems to be a significant shortage of staff and applicants for open positions. So we are expecting a really tough challenge this year in hiring. And I've heard from other superintendents around this region and around the state that shortages are, are real and we're not sure how, how things will pan out as we start the hiring process. That happens every time, every year at this time. So the legislature is trying to get involved in that and try to get, trying to get an understanding of how they might, how the state might help attract new teachers to the field and teachers to the state. Also, the legislature has passed Act 78, which allows for a temporary open meeting law shift that allowed a, a public meeting like this to occur remotely due to the conditions of the pandemic. So Act 78 is what allowed this meeting to be fully remote. It expires next January in 2023. And it's just a consideration that we need to keep in mind over the, over the course of the next year. It allows the board to use this if we feel like the COVID-19 virus conditions are so bad that we should shift to, to remote. Speak briefly about legislation that has been put on hold or delayed a little bit. There's a consideration of now about how to address the state's initiative to commit to a statewide district data management system. I think we've Ted had talked about this earlier, maybe a few months ago. And so now the proposal is before the legislator, legislature to create a study committee to consider how they might, might try to move that forward. They put it on hold and they believe it's a good idea and it would make sense to have a statewide system. But it would be, it would have an impact on how we do things in the business office. So that's a study committee that might be happening with the statewide. And Ted will continue to monitor that to see how it might affect us. And I'll finish by just mentioning a little bit of an update on the people waiting study. And Alison and Ted have been faithful followers of this work and they've been fully, fully involved in, in all the week by week changes that have happened with the waiting study and how they might, how it might be implemented in, in the financial system. So they might have more up to date information than I have. But just to summarize, in December 2021, the task force that was supposed to study the UVM waiting, you know, implementation of the waiting study issued a final report to the General Assembly and that report made recommendations that is going to require a pretty good deal of work for the legislature to consider. They've tried to split that work up between the different committees in the House and the Senate. They've got considerations like how they're going to either wait English language learner students or to create a new ELL categorical, categorical aid program. They've got to decide how they would measure poverty. They've got to decide how to integrate Act 173 and special education funding. And in many, many, all the many, many parts of what this waiting study involves. So there's a lot of pieces to it. It's very complicated and slow moving. But it's moving and I, I don't know if Ted or Alison want to say anything more than that. But just I, it seems like there's a lot changing right now and it seems to be forward progress where before I wasn't sure it was anything was going to happen at all this year. But if Hurley, if you're okay, I could pass over to Ted or Alison for any other comment.
Ted or Alison, any updates on the weighted study?
Alison, would you like to comment?
Sure. I mean, I think Bill covered the basics of it. It is now in many committees, looking at many different facets of it, the financial, the education piece. And not only does it change by the week, but it changes by the day and the hour of the direction we think we're going. So it's a roller coaster and I think it'd be great if more board members were paying attention and involved and speaking up for our schools and our kids because we really need this to happen.
Thanks, Alison. And I agree, I agree, as Alison mentioned, that Bill covered it quite well. The only thing that I would add is while it's being considered by four committees, two in the House and two in the Senate, the challenge is that given the complexities of the educational funding system and the obvious fact that many people naturally have not had to be too familiar with that, there's a significant educational process that has to go on in order for, you know, a wider group of stakeholders to, to make hopefully informed decisions. And that's one of the reasons, as Alison indicated, that we're staying very involved in providing information as best we can in the general interest. So thanks for the opportunity to add to that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Olson.
You're welcome.
All right, Building Committee Report.
Hello. So we had a Building Committee meeting on February 1st and we, it was mostly just some updates from Glenn on our green schools initiatives, some of the Esr project updates and like the timeline for flooring and the HVAC projects. We talked about the outdoor learning projects that are going to be at each of the schools. Some bids that were going out and contracting, we talked about PCP testing. And then just a lot of discussings around the assessment report that was done, was it three years ago, I believe? And how we can use that to continue with the capital plan that the AOE is going to be making us set a little bit more formal, but there's no format set on that. Glenn did pretty much most of the talking at that meeting. And there is, for board members, there is the presentation of everything that he talked about in detail in our packets. So anybody has any questions?
Any questions? Okay, Kevin, policy report?
We had a policy meeting, our most recent one was January 25th. There were a number of policies that we approved, but the paperwork process didn't come through. So we'll have them on the agenda the next time around for first reading approval. There's a couple of other policies that we were, we were going around and around in circles on, and we'll get back to those the next time.
Okay.
If anyone has concerns about any of the policies that you see listed, let me know. Thanks.
When's your next committee meeting, Kevin?
I knew you were going to ask that.
I saw you go to look for it. That's why I was going to ask.
It's in February. No, it's February 15th at 4:30.
Okay, questions?
And it will probably be a Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bliss, recovery update?
All right, Abby. Abby Budowski is here and ready to go and I will stand by and let her present to you.
Hello. Good evening. A great deal of the work I do as the recovery coordinator happens behind my computer where I'm working on moving these federally funded projects forward that will benefit the health and safety of the Rutland students, staff and community. And I'm really lucky in that way because most of what I work on every day is a win, even if it takes multiple years for these wins to be realized. So when I work on grant language, support the principals and making their professional development plans, when I'm wandering the halls doing flooring inventories with Glenn, we're all, we're making these small steps closer to realizing this potential of an incredible investment. But I just want to make sure that folks at home who are really worried about so much right now know that the support of our community and our district is critical to recovery. Our greatest priority is the stabilization of our school system. So our staff can continue to provide the love for our children that they show in every building every day. The best way to show your support of our teachers and students is to be engaged and vote because we believe in them and we value them. So today I have some really good news. The board's probably aware of it, but they've seen in their packet. I've shared a preliminary letter showing that Rutland City Public Schools have been granted Vermont Agency of Education Concept Approval for air quality and HVAC improvements using the ARP-ESR funding. That's the third round of funding. So when we receive the official letters from the state, we will of course, share them with you as well. We're hoping to address air quality and HVAC issues in all our CPS buildings. And we have also put out an RFP, a request for proposal for an air quality study using the SR2 funding. And that will give us a plan to proceed on this large multi-year ARP-ESR air quality project. In addition to air quality, our CPS has three RFPs out for carpet removal projects. So we are looking at Rutland High School, a combined Northeast Stafford and Rutland Middle School project and one at Rutland Intermediate. So any interested vendors in either the air quality or carpet should reach out to Glenn Scott to schedule a site visit soon. I just want to make sure that folks know recovery is going to take a very long time. And so we really hope that people will support us on that journey by voting. And I'm available for questions from the board. Just like to provide you with an occasional update on how we're doing. Thank you.
Questions from Abbott for Abby? Do you see any, Mr. Bliss?
I think you're okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Emmy. So at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing contractual matters, the premature release of information regarding those subjects would place the board at a substantial disadvantage, including Ted, Rob and Bill Olson in executive session.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will.
Can we take a minute break, please?
Sure.
But can I say something? Sorry, Hurley. Can I say something before we go into executive session?
Okay.
Um, just as a board member, I just want to, because I believe this is the last board meeting for four of our members. So I want to.
We have one more. We have one more. We have one more.
We do?
Yeah, we do.
Well, fine. I've already started saying it, so I'll just finish it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Erin, for all your years of service and Hurley. Who, who, who am I missing? Oh, Dina. I'm like, I'm staring at Dina. So.
Yeah.
I said Anne.
Yeah.
I'm a selective hearing. Are we done?
Okay, yes, we're going to. All right, we'll see you in a couple of minutes on the other side.
Okay.
Mr. Bliss, do you need me to stay in the meeting? Mr. Bliss.
Yes, I hear you. Stand by. I think Patricia, you'll be fine. Once everybody exits here, I'm going to stop recording. And if there's anything that happens outside of the executive session, we'll be sure to take minutes and that way the public can know about it. Okay?
All right, thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too. Take care. Thanks for your help.